Hey, welcome to another episode of Footnotes. Today, we're talking to Dr. Aditya Bustles. She is my friend, but she's also an at-large member of Columbia City Council. She has a PhD in public health from the Arnold School of Health here at the University of South Carolina, and she's a consultant with Deloitte. She does a lot of things for a lot of people. But I think this conversation, she focuses more on her public service and what she also does in public health. I learned a lot, and I think you will too. All this is next on Footnotes. Aditya, thank you for joining us today. We have Dr. Aditya Bustles with us. I think a lot of people know you as being on city council here in Columbia, but you're also a wife and a mom. You have a PhD in public health from the Arnold School here at University of South Carolina, and you're a consultant with Deloitte Consulting, which is a pretty big firm. You know, we wanted to have you on for a while. We've known each other for maybe a couple of years now. And I think what, you wear all these hats, you know? And I think a good way to start is, so, all these things that you're doing and what you're known for, that someone might, one might call a resume. I mean, were these, you know, childhood dreams or, you know, goals that you set as an adolescent? Or how did you get all these layers?
That's a great question. Well, first of all, thank you for having me. I'm looking forward to having this conversation with a friend. I wouldn't say running for office was ever in the plan. I think for many of us, it's not in the plan, especially non-traditional candidates like ourselves, who really, really just want to make a difference. I always loved public health because I've always seen health as the great equalizer, growing up and seeing how it's something that everybody has in common. And while we're so quick to point out differences and sometimes focus a little too much on differences, health is something that we can all relate to. And so, growing up and seeing how firsthand, when you have access to public parks and a safe neighborhood and people that care about each other and access to healthy foods, how regardless of your socioeconomic status or background, you really are able to achieve your full potential. That's what always made me excited about public health. And I was grateful and blessed to be able to grow up in a family that loved science. So I was kind of around it a lot. But public health has changed over the last decade, I would say even in the last three years. And so, it's evolved a lot as a field. But what I love about it is that the skills that you learn in public health is all about connecting the dots and helping people understand complex concepts in an easy-to-digest way. And I feel like politics is a little bit of that as well. So it's been really interesting to see how transitioning or infusing some of my public health background into city policy has been more seamless than I would have expected in terms of some of the skillsets that I'm bringing in that maybe isn't typically at the table.
Yeah, so it's something, you know, you were describing public health, and I mean, you even mentioned parks and wellness, that it's, it's public health. It's not necessarily public sickness. In other words, I think when people think about public health, they just think about, oh, when someone's sick, we need to think about these things. But you didn't, you didn't bring that in.
No, because the philosophy is if public health is working, you don't know it's happening. If we're able to prevent bad things from happening, then you won't know that it didn't happen, right? It's much easier for us to focus on the things that have happened. So when you even look at the pandemic, for example, there were so many things that happened that we had to react to. And obviously, there were a lot of different philosophies and approaches that led to, I think, a pretty disjointed approach to COVID. But it speaks to how public health is grounded in this idea of prevention, keeping things from happening in the first place. And that's really hard to add value to, tangible value, to sell to people that this is why you should care about this.
What do you, what do you mean by that? Meaning people would rather focus on problems? Or if it's working, you should, I mean, what do you mean by that?
So I think sometimes, especially when I put my policymaker hat back on, we want those immediate wins. We want something to be able to show for what work we're doing. But so much of public health is let's set up a foundation or a framework or, you know, something that ensures that we're promoting positive health down the road. But that takes time. That takes sometimes generations. Or again, it speaks to no problems happen, so there's nothing that you can say that you solved, even though you solved many things. And so, that's why funding for public health, for example, is often more challenging to be able to show those results very quickly. Or how, when you're trying to promote programs at the federal and state level, you have to really be critical about how you are communicating the value of public health to ensure that, you know, policymakers and other funders understand that this is something that's worth investing in.
Yeah, yeah. There's always not enough money, and there's plenty of other issues that are kind of screaming at you. And so, if you have something that sort of is, is not acute.
Yeah.
Is that what I'm hearing? Like, if it's just not acute, it just doesn't get focused.
Exactly. We're a very reactive society in many different ways. And I think for some people, that can be disheartening in the field of public health. For me, that's a challenge I like to take on to help really people understand why it's so important to think about the whole picture as opposed to just one small piece and focus on the small and incremental wins along the way. A lot of the big change that we want to see is going to take time and often may not happen in our lifetime. But that doesn't mean that there aren't going to be steps or, you know, monumental occasions along the way that show that we're going the right path.
So you talked about kind of reactionary, and I understand, I think, what you, what you mean by that. Was there something that you were reacting to that made you want to run for public office?
Absolutely. So when COVID happened and we didn't know very much about it, there was a lot of language and jargon and terminology that I had learned about and used in my little public health silo for years. And now it was being used in mainstream conversations, whether it was social media or print media or television. And what I found was that there was this gap in Columbia of someone who could help people understand what we know and what we don't know. And I found myself writing a lot of op-eds, talking about ways in which we can protect ourselves from the virus, talking about the potential impacts on the economy and how small businesses need to be supported. And I was lucky to be able to do that because I was at a 501(c)(3), as opposed to a lot of my other public health colleagues that often sit in more, I would say, state agencies or bureaucratic positions where they can't speak out about certain things, right? And so, kind of indirectly, that created a platform for me to be able to talk about issues at a state level. And so, I'll never forget when I got a phone call from a sitting congressman who said, you know, "Doc, I am getting a lot of feedback about closing or opening schools. I'd love to hear your opinion about how I should think about this." And here I was, 30 years old, giving advice to an elected official that had been there for decades. And so, that's what really made me realize, why not someone like me be at the table, especially in a time that we're coming out of this unprecedented, you know, occurrence? And there's a lot of things that need to be fixed in response to this pandemic. And so, you often have the business owners and the bankers and the lawyers that are at the table, but you never have those social sector or public health folks that can have a very strong understanding of economic development and some of these other pieces, but approach it from a different way. And I think that diversity of thought was missing on city council. So I said, "Okay, I'm gonna run." And I remember that's when we met, and then I was like, "I don't even know how to hire a campaign manager. I don't know what's happening, but I'm gonna do this."
Yeah.
And I did it, and that's a really good feeling.
Yeah, and I think, you know, just as an aside, I think there is that fantasy out there of sort of regular people. You know, they have a life and work they're doing, and they purposely sort of step out of that. Or in addition to that, they add on a campaign. And, you know, not only are you on a city council, but you're on the, on a city council in the capital city of a state, and you're also an at-large representative. So what's the difference between being an at-large representative and someone that's not at-large? Because people may not catch that distinction.
So at-large means that you're basically similar to the mayor in that you represent the entire city. And that means from Fort Jackson to Elgin, so parts of Elgin are in the city, to, you know, parts of Ermo, and then of course, Harbison area, and then to the urban core of the city of Columbia. And with that comes a lot of different perspectives that you have to keep in mind. I have found that when we're looking at things like zoning issues or bringing in a new business or a new idea or a new park or a project, it's easier for our district reps to just think about the specific impact on their district. But for at-large, you're thinking about the city as a whole. And sometimes your decision may be different than the district-specific person, right? Because I'm looking at what is best for Columbia, not just what is best for one part of Columbia.
Sure.
So I often say, you know, I'm not pro-this or pro-that, I'm pro-Columbia. Whatever at the, at the very end of the game, you know, is going to benefit us is what I'm going to be supportive of.
I mean, can you talk a little bit more about maybe some of the, some of the challenges of trying? I mean, you're representing, like you said, I mean, even, even the communities and areas of, of the greater Columbia area that you mentioned are pretty different. You know, some are very retail-heavy, some are just the infrastructure's not there to support the amount of people that live there.
Yeah.
Some, the infrastructure's crumbling. And some, some areas, you know, are seeing, you know, new life, and some areas just haven't seen anything new in decades. I mean, how do you, how do you gain perspective at a ground level having to, to sort of oversee those, those things?
So I'm somebody who loves data, and I love coupling that data with, I think, personal lived experiences. I'm somebody who thinks very systematically. I want to see the whole picture, and I want to understand how different pieces are connected. So first and foremost, I want to look at the data and understand where we have potential gaps or problems or issues. And then I want to focus on the people themselves who have firsthand experiences that may not be captured by numbers, but certainly, you know, have those valuable perspectives that can help fill in some of the questions that I may have. I think when you combine those two things, you really start to get a sense of what needs to happen. And I think it's also important to admit that I'm never going to be the smartest person on every single issue. But I do know that I have enough knowledge to ask the right questions to make sure I'm knowledgeable enough to make an informed decision. And so, when you kind of let that go, that you need to know every single thing about every single issue and really rely on some of your allies or some of your community champions and people that have been working in the, in that specific space for a long time, I think that's when you make the best decisions and you're most authentic in the way that you're thinking about how to solve a problem. And generally speaking, I try to approach all problems as the at-large council member with transparency. So if I don't know something, I'm going to tell you I don't know it, or, you know, I haven't thought enough about it. I want to be consistent in my decision-making and consistent in terms of the values that I hold, that I have run on and that I've expressed to constituents. And then, you know, lastly, really recognizing that what may benefit the whole may be very different than what may benefit one specific group. And so, ensuring that we're balancing those two needs to really, I think, get us a good result is particularly important, too.
What's part of the, so focus on, on this role that you have of being in, pulling a public office. And you've done it now for about two years?
Almost two years, yep.
So you're halfway into your term. You know a little bit more than day one, but I'm sure you're still, you know, the learning curve is almost unending. But what, what's in your survival kit, if you will? When you think about how to cope with constituencies, cope with all the information that you have to absorb? To your point, you like the data. Well, we can drown ourselves in data.
Oh, for sure.
You know, the schedule, the, I mean, tell us, take us a little bit inside in terms of how you sort of survive? Because I think a lot of people look at that, and they automatically say, "I could never, ever, never do that." But we need people to do that.
We do. We absolutely do. And I think it's important when we say, "Oh, you need to do your civic duty and you need to vote." What, what also we need to keep in mind is you need to vote for good people. And oftentimes, we don't have good people run because of the fear of some of the things that you've talked about. And I will say, especially as a woman and now a mom and a wife, there is a certain level of scrutiny that we also have as candidates that I think a lot of women are like, "I don't want to do that. I don't want people commenting on how I'm dressed or my, or my body, or if I say something a certain way that a man may be seen as, oh, you know, he's a hero, he's so tough," where it may come off kind of like catty if I say it. And so, you have to kind of balance some of those pieces as well. And then, of course, for me, I am 40-something years younger than the oldest person on city council. So there's a generational gap as well. And so, really...
Somebody, that's two generations.
That's two generations, yeah. Actually, yeah, I guess their kids have grandkids. Yeah, okay, so two generations. And it's interesting to me how they are treated differently than me in some ways in terms of maybe the level of support that they receive or the level of prestige just because of age. And, and you have to be okay with calling some of that out, right? But I will say, I use a lot of humor to kind of cope. I often joke and say that I am Leslie Knope in an episode of Parks and Rec. So I often watch Parks and Rec, especially on days that are tough or you have people that come in and, you know, scream at you, which has happened at city council meetings, or people that send you really mean emails. You've been an elected official. You recognize that some folks feel that because you're in that role, they can do whatever they want and say whatever they want to you. But I think they forget that we're human, and, you know, words sting or actions sting sometimes. And so, I think a lot of humor is helpful. I try to be really good about, and I think it's become particularly important, about balancing work and personal life, especially as a mom now and completely changing the way that I approach meetings and speaking engagements, and my priorities have changed, right? And I'm still very passionate and love what I do as a city councilwoman, but I also have to understand that it's okay sometimes to say, "No, I can't be everywhere," especially as an at-large member. So really developing those relationships with my colleagues where I can rely on them to help support some of the things that I may need to do. And I think all of us on city council, which I think the public notices as well, we get along pretty well. We may not disagree, we may not agree, I'm sorry. But we certainly do help each other when, when, when it's possible. And then, of course, you know, some of the other things that you do to relieve stress, love working out, love spending time, checking out new restaurants and exploring and traveling. And those are the things that I think keep me grounded, and making time for those things makes it possible. To people that may be listening that are maybe toying with or are slightly interested in getting involved, you should absolutely do it. I think that you can create your own boundaries. You can change the perception of what it means to be a public elected official. Or, I don't know, I don't think our generation says politician. I don't necessarily find myself as a politician, but I'm sure that's the term that we should use, right? We can redefine what that means. And I think that that is changing as we're able to be more authentic and transparent and responsive because of some of the tools that we have, like social media or like the ability to be able to, you know, share something on YouTube immediately after a meeting. So those would be some of the things I do.
Well, so you use the word politician because I think, you know, that almost sort of connotes it's a profession.
Yeah.
And I think, you know, I think I can say this about you, and I certainly say this about myself when I, when I served, is that that was not my job. You know, it was something that I did, it was a role, it was a hat, if you will, that, that I wore, but it wasn't my job. I'm a financial advisor to business owners, you know? And that's, that's how we put food on the table and pay college tuition and all that kind of stuff. And you have a day job as well, as well as, I mean, pretty substantial academic credentials to help you in that field, you know? And I think that that's probably kind of the bad taste a lot of people have in their mouth is that there are a lot of people that are in elected office that have never really held a job. Their job has always just been politics.
You're not wrong.
Or they, they are currently not holding a job. They might be retired from something or whatever, and they're now using that spare time. But it's sort of like, there's not a multifaceted aspect to their life. There's one facet, you know? And not to soapbox, but I think that's what is, does kind of create that bad taste for people because you're involved in other areas of what most people consider a normal life.
Yeah.
You know, you have other aspects going on.
Yeah.
And I've got to think that that informs your service.
Oh, every day.
Certainly influences it.
Absolutely.
It probably should.
Yeah. I think that it makes me a better politician to be able to, you know, have everyday experiences and engage in, you know, different aspects of community and then take those experiences to city hall. I do also think, though, it's important for young people, to the point that, you know, for some people, this is their job. It's this, it's striking this balance, right? So not many people know that we get paid $13,000 a year to do this job. It's a quote, "part-time job," but no one's going to stop calling me at noon because I finished my four hours. I want to do a good job, so I always go above and beyond. And there are definitely weeks where I'm working 80 hours a week, 40 hours with Deloitte, you know, 40 hours with city council. That's my choice, but also I feel like that's my commitment to the city. And that's where I think that there needs to be a balance between, you know, seeing this as a service, but also making sure that it's a reasonable position that you're able to pay the bills and do things, right? So for young people, they're not going to run for $13,000. And I don't blame them because not many jobs unfortunately have that flexibility that I do with my employer that would allow them to do both because you have to have a job to be able to pay the bills and pay for college. And so, I'd like to see the model maybe change one day where we're able to either have employers be more flexible to allow people to engage in these things or potentially take a look at the way that these positions are structured with the expectation that you are available and this is a commitment, but you're not kind of, you know, going double time to be able to provide for your family as well. And I think that's why you have so many retired folks or people that work for themselves run because it's just not a feasibility. And I really want to see more young people from different professions step up and run for office, all levels of government.
Yeah. Yeah, that's a good point. I, I remember doing some mental math. Actually, I actually wrote it down. So I, I got to a point where I couldn't do it in my head, so I had to write it down. But it was something like, even at a national level, or I think at our state level, if you sort of, what if you paid people a million dollars a year? In other words, if you were elected to a state office, you know, a senate or a house seat, and you were paid $1 million, but out of that million dollars certainly was your salary, but you had to pay for staff, you had to do, you, you were kind of like $10.99. Like you had to provide for everything. It actually wasn't that much money.
Yeah.
Compared to the overall budget.
Yeah.
And, you know, it's sort of like if you had other strings attached, you know? Now, I think people would sort of go crazy about paying, you know, quote, "a politician a million dollars a year." But again, if they had to allocate that money themselves, as a lot of people in business do or something like that, you know, what, what could happen? But that's just kind of crazy, crazy ideas. But I think, I think we're at a point where we kind of need some ideas, at least to kind of create some motion on some things because I think there are a lot of people that are frustrated. And I have seen that frustration definitely go down to the local level. You know, they're, they're mad at national level conversations that just permeate down to the local level.
Yeah.
And it has nothing to do with water bills or zoning or taxes, you know, property taxes and stuff like that. It's just all this, anyway.
But I will say, on the other side, you know, when I wake up and I try to be... The best piece of advice I got, and I'll backtrack a little bit, is from the late Joe Taylor, who was a very close friend of mine on city council. We could not be more different on paper, but we both were people that cared immensely about our community and city, and we weren't afraid to ruffle feathers to prove our point or to make change. And one of the things he said to me when I would get jaded about national-level politics or local kind of politics was, "Let's go to sleep, let's wake up tomorrow and try again." And so, every morning I wake up and I'm super excited, and I remind myself that there's a magic to local government that other levels of government don't have. And that is the, the ability to make immediate change in someone's life. And because we're nonpartisan, a lot of the bickering that you see, you don't have to deal with. You really got, get to focus on the issues that you care about, and you find so much consensus across roads and zoning and economic development and addressing homelessness and some of these issues that are quality of life issues or public safety issues. And so, I would say, that's what people need to understand, that we not, you know, local government may not be as sexy as some of the things that you see on Twitter or CNN or Fox News. But what we're working on has the potential to impact you and your family daily. And that, to me, is very exciting when people say, you know, "Aditya, was this what you expected it to be?" And I'm like, "I didn't know what to expect." But what I do know is the feeling to be able to solve someone's water bill or to be able to bring in a new business to our downtown or to think about ways in which we can address homelessness and, and the rise of homelessness across Columbia and actually implement solutions is a really great feeling because we're able to do it. And I do believe that city government is an incubator for ideas that can then be really brought to life at a state and national level as well.
So to that point about being an incubator, I mean, what, what's, what, what kind of activity looks like that that you're seeing here in Columbia where we're maybe incubating some things? Or, you know, even like, what's been your favorite thing to work on so far?
So I'll give an example of actually something that did bubble up to the state level. I, my first law or ordinance is what we call it on a local level that I passed was with unanimous support, and that was to require the reporting of a lost or stolen firearm. And this was in response to the rise in gun violence across the city, the state, and nationally speaking as well. And one piece of data that we had was most of these firearms were stolen out of cars, vehicles, homes. And so, we passed that ordinance on a local level, and I engaged our attorney general, I engaged the NRA, I engaged local community stakeholders. That was an approach that had never been done before in terms of talking to people that don't typically talk to each other. And, you know, there were certainly disagreements and, you know, points of contention, but that's when the magic happens, and we were able to develop an ordinance that I think everybody was relatively okay with. I won't say happy, but okay with. And because of the attention that that brought to Columbia, trying to do something in terms of increasing another tool in the toolbox to address gun violence because we can't do it all, that same ordinance then was adapted on the state level to try and get passed by Republican legislators of actually, some of them were actually part of the Freedom Caucus, to get that passed on a state level to ensure that we have a accurate reporting of lost or stolen firearms. And I do believe that was because we generated that buzz here in the capital city that, "Look at, this is what we're trying to do. Here's how we've brought stakeholders together, and here's what the implications can be if we have a good idea of what's happening with lost or stolen firearms." So that's one example. And that was a really, really awesome feeling to see folks that don't talk to each other, talk to each other, talk to me, and really think critically about the way in which this could be a more broad-scale policy change.
Yeah. Well, I think you bring up something, too, that there are things that are happening almost everywhere like that, where conversations are being had that don't sort of make sense on paper or, or people are working together, God forbid, I'm being sarcastic, though, that wouldn't normally want to associate with one another. But they are getting, they are moving those things forward and sort of chipping away at it. You know, I think that people fantasize on there just being this direct answer to a problem. But I think some of these problems are so complex that there is no direct answer that per se that would not violate our constitution or not, you know, cause a, call something else and, and, you know, or not affect another area that we don't want to affect.
Yeah.
You know, that, that it is this incremental approach. And it, and it often is slow, as you mark time. But to your point, it, it can be almost tectonic in that tectonic processes are pretty slow, but their impact is undeniable.
Yep.
And I think that gets lost. It's not, you know, reporting or whatever. You guys didn't break out into a fistfight, so it's not exciting enough for people to, you know, understand it or whatever, or even to be, to be aware of. But I think that aspect of stolen firearms contributing to gun violence is, it is a thing. I remember Sheriff Lot talking to us in Forest Acres about, you know, he's like, "What I would put on a billboard is lock your damn car doors at night."
Yeah.
He's like, "If we had the money, I would put that on billboards all over the county." He said, "And we could almost, you know, stop that problem."
Yeah.
With just a simple click or hit your key fob or whatever. So that's interesting. You talked about this a little bit earlier, but, you know, I want to kind of circle back to sort of this... I, I agree with you that we need more people running for office. But aren't there things that people can do that aren't quite at the level of running for office? Like serving on boards and things like that? I mean, talk a little bit about what you see at the capital city level in terms of maybe even unfilled positions in that, in that route.
So some of it, of course, was on the city side of really modernizing how we recruit potential board applicants. So we have moved to an online platform that allows you to seamlessly upload your resume, fill out an application for multiple boards. And, you know, you're not focused on just sending an email to one person who may or may not still work at the city. So those are some of the kind of process things behind the scenes that we've been working on that don't hit the news, but certainly make your experience interacting with the city a lot better.
Right, so you drug them into the early 2000s?
Yes, 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 yes. So, you know, something, we also then revised our guidelines for serving on a board or commission. So, you know, being consistent about attending meetings and enforcing our attendance policy, you know, making sure that you live in the city so that you actually can represent, you know, your, your fellow constituents or, I guess not constituents for them, but your fellow neighbors. And so, after that, we have started to see a little bit of an uptick, but there's still several board positions open on pretty influential boards, right? Like the Planning Commission or the Housing Commission or, you know, we have a Board of Appeals, zoning appeals, where we're often asking people to apply after the deadline has passed because we still have positions to fill. And, you know, some of it, I think, might be that people don't know what it entails. And, and we try to be vocal about that. So some of these boards actually are voting on... So some of these boards actually are voting on issues that then we as city council use as recommendations for final policy, right? That's huge. That is a, a point in the process where we're getting community feedback on something. And then I think for others, it's just very much been a sense of, I don't think I can handle it. I think that the boards and commissions approach is a great way to get involved in a less intimidating setting, and helps you really understand the different moving parts and pieces of municipal government, and then can help you really think about, well, what do I want to do beyond this? And I've seen a lot of people get involved in that way, and then move into maybe more of an elected role, or something like that. And then I would be remiss not to mention that Columbia is a city of neighborhoods, and so there's lots of opportunities to be your neighborhood association president, and a lot of us go to our neighborhood association presidents on the regular, to ask, you know, what they think on behalf of their neighborhood about certain issues, and that helps us in making decisions as well.
Yeah. I think, you know, when you talk about civic involvement like that, and then I think some of the, how people feel about that, again, you know, we sort of, if people, if we have the government we deserve, if you will, we also have the government support that we deserve, because people won't sort of throw in to that. And if, you know, it's just, that is something that, it does concern me that it appears to some to be so distasteful to be a part of that process, that they're just opting out with very little data, very little information, it's just more of a, more of an opinion. And I feel like folks like you and me, and there, there are a lot of others that are, that are sort of, you know, generationally similar, are trying to tell people like, no, it's really like this.
Yeah.
You know, and you can really make it a lot more bite-sized than just this kind of gargantuan, you know, you don't have to start at being an at-large city council candidate, and then, and then member. You know, you can start it at this smaller, smaller thing, really dive deep into an issue that you essentially can become an expert in, not overnight, but over a pretty short amount of time.
Yeah.
And you have direct input into what a voting body is actually going to look at.
Yeah.
And I, I would like to think that that aspect would appeal to more people, and that they would, now they can go online, and they don't have to get the sheet of paper, and go to the right place on the right day, you know, they can, you know, like I said, join the early 2000s on that, to do that, but hopefully you guys will see an uptick in that.
Yeah, but I want to go back to one of the points that you made about how people think it's one set way, when really it's more this way. And I think that goes back to how much society has changed, and we digest information in such small snippets, sometimes that small snippet has to be the most memorable thing possible. And we know that human nature, we're more attracted to fear, or anger, or some sort of negative emotion is often more memorable than something that's super positive. And so you often just see these very, I think, distorted realities of what things are like, and not to say there aren't dark moments in, in even local government, but people, people don't often see the greater picture. So even when I was running, and prior to running, you know, I was a firecracker about so many things, I'd get so heated about things that I'd read online, and I found over time that, yes, there is an element of truth to that, but there's so much more that needs to be considered. And I think that's helped me in coping, you know, going back to our conversation earlier, with some of the decisions that need to be made, being more grounded in how I approach different decisions, and sometimes removing a little bit of emotion out of it, so that I can make sure that I'm making the best decision for the best long-term results. And I wish more people were able to see that, or be involved enough to see that there's more than just that 30-second, you know, Instagram story that you're seeing in terms of what the problem is, and, and what decision was made, and what that means for you. And when people start to see that, they'll realize that it's, in many instances, not as divisive as it feels on, on a local level, I'll speak for local only, and that there is a lot of really great opportunities for change.
Yeah. So as we wrap up, I feel like I've, I've got to put you a little bit on the spot and ask this question, but is this type of service, in terms of elected service, something that you want to continue?
I think I'm good at it. So I think I have been able to help change people's perceptions about city government in Columbia. I always chuckle when someone calls, and I'm like, hi, it's Otete, and they're like, may I please speak with Dr. Bustles? And I'm like, it's her. And they're like, wait, I thought I was calling her secretary. I was like, no secretary, this is me. And just to be able to change people's perception that city council members can be accessible, they can be relatable, they can be authentic and transparent with you, and I think that was missing for a long time. And while my colleagues love to tease me that I put a lot of stuff on social media, people appreciate it, they want to know what's happening. And yes, I communicate a little bit differently as a proud millennial, right? So it's something that I want to continue to kind of cultivate and see where it goes, but I never want to lose sight of why I'm doing it in the first place, and that's because I really love being able to solve problems and see my city change. And I'm just really excited for what's to come for Columbia, and for the record, I include Forest Acres in Columbia, okay? So I'm very excited to see all of the, the different changes that are happening over time, and so we'll see. I think, I think there's a nice harmony between public health and politics right now, and I'd like to continue that.
Good, well, I hope you do. I mean, really, and, and, you know, the, the right people need to be, be in these offices, and I, you know, I'm biased, but I think you're, I think you're one of those. So thank you for your service, thank you for just all the hats that you choose to wear, and for just, as weird as this sounds, just for wanting to do a good job. I think, I think that's another lost art these days, is people actually just kind of taking pride in their work, and wanting to do a good job, because it's, it's the right thing to do.[1779.04]